All right, today is Tuesday, July 5th, 2022. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, we are going to call the meeting to order with a roll call. Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez. I believe she's participating via Zoom link and I do see her there.
She doesn't have her speakers turned on.
Correct. Councilmember Rodriguez, are you there?
I.
Unmute.
Hear me?
Yes, but barely. You're breaking in and out.
Hello?
Hello. Okay, we can hear you.
Okay, I don't know what happened there. I apologize, but yes, I'm here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cortez.
Here.
And Mayor Walter here. At this time, we'll begin with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, we'll go into call to the public. Call to the public is for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless those matters are properly noticed for discussion or legal action. Ms. Garcia, do we have any speakers this evening?
Ms. Cassandra Sherm just turned in a slip.
Ms. Sherm, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and Town Council. Everybody's like here. I just wanted to give some gratitude and some props to our town for the Fourth of July festival yesterday that were really well. And all the different volunteers and things that were there, they really put a benefit in there. And also attending the 459 meetings have been very informative. So thank you for your time and thank you those that did that.
Thank you very much. Is there any other speaker requests at this time? Seeing no such movement and no hands raised online, closing the first call to the public. Item six is our public hearing and presentation. Six A is public hearing, conditional use permit for self-storage or mini-storage facility located at State Route and Florence Heights Drive and discussion approval disapproval of resolution number 1831-22. This is a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the conditional use permit for a self-storage facility by B and S Equities LLC for portions of Assessor Parcel Number 202-04-042H located at the southwest corner of State Route 79 and Florence Heights Drive in Florence, Arizona. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Today, we have a conditional use permit for the self-storage or mini-storage brought to you by B and S Equities LLC. Today, we have the owner, the applicant, and the project manager, Brian Baker, here as well to answer questions and to provide any information. This conditional use permit was applied for a couple of months back and it is located at the southeast corner of State Route 79 and Florence Heights Drive on this triangle of vacant land. This land is approximately 2.92 acres and it is currently hard-zoned for highway business, commercial, or B2. Now, the storage facility that they're asking or requesting for will be used for dead storage and there will be an office that will be used by one to two employees. Now, the zoning code does allow for a mini-storage facility, provided there is solely dead storage, so there will be no RVs. There will be no boat storage. It'll just be your regular dead storage. The applicant is proposing to place 443 self-storage units on this piece of land as well as a 500-square-foot office. This is going to be a permanent office. It will not be temporary. There will be one to two employees that will work your basic Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Surveillance security cameras will be on the site in order to continue 24-hour security within the business. And vehicular access points will be found off of State Route 79 as well as two other access points off of Florence Heights Drive. So that's a total of three places where employees and employees and customers can get into the site. These will each have a 30-foot-wide gate in front of the entrance to provide extra security, so only employees and customers can get inside the site. Now, the setbacks proposed on the site plan meet the 25 feet in the front, 20 feet in the side, 10 feet on the square, 20 feet on the street side, 10 feet on the interior side, and 10 feet in the rear. These are the requirements set by the B2 code for commercial development in this area. The units that will be on the site are a variety of sizes, including 5x10, the largest being 20x30. Now, 20% of these units will be air-conditioned, but not all of them will be. This site will be open-air, however, it will be enclosed by six-foot wall. And one of the things the applicant brought for was a variety of different wall types. They are open to any suggestions, recommendations on how that wall should look, so it just won't be your standard masonry block. There will be some designs incorporating color and design incorporating to it. Now, this will be developed, or the applicant plans to develop this along with ADOT's roundabout construction. The reasoning behind this is that it is better to have all the construction being done at once instead of having ADOT's construction happening and then having theirs as well. So this is a visual of the site plan that the applicant has brought forward, utilizing all the space, and it also includes the roundabouts that will be incorporated by ADOT later on. This is just a preliminary design of what they're looking to do. They are open to different color options and to different wall designs. This is just one of the initial looks they have. Now, findings for uses that are in the area. Currently, it is in a B2 zoning. We do have a use to the south, that is for apartments. Single-family homes do flank it to the north and to the east, as well as some parts of the west. However, there is also some B2 commercial zoning that is also located across the road to the west. So it is not completely out of place. It is also at an internal or major intersection between 287 Florence Heights and 79B. So there is a lot of access and traffic that will be able to flow in and out through it. It's for public here, public meetings. There was a meeting held on June 13th at the community center at 6:00 PM. We did have one member of the public come and express their their comments on ADOT's roundabout and they asked questions on where this property was located exactly and how it integrated with ADOT's roundabouts. They did not have any comments on whether they were against or for the project. This did go to the commission on June 16th in 2022 and it came here to town council today. The public hearing at P&amp;Z Commission did have, I believe, if I remember correctly, two people come. One was against and one was for the storage facility. Now, letters of notification were mailed out 300 feet from the property line as required by state statute, as well as an ad was posted in the local Florence Blade Tribune newspaper. An assign is currently posted on the property and has been since the beginning of the application. Staff recommends the approval of this conditional use permit. The proposal meets the community developments code requirements and the use is compatible with the location, the traffic, as well as some of the uses that are currently already encouraged or there. This also is a location where there's some main roadway intersections which allows for convenient access to the site and for storage of people's property. The planning and zoning commission did forward a recommendation of approval with listed conditions within the report. We did have some suggestions from commissioner members that the design of the wall when it comes back to be more aesthetically pleasing as they found this is an entrance to the Old Town area. So today, we have the town council public hearing and the action was advertised for today as well. With that, are there any questions from the council? Councilmember Anderson.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the hours. The hours, eight to five, Mondays through Friday. I know there's keypad that's going to be put on the gates if I understand what I read correctly. But it doesn't say what the hours are for those keypads. Will people be able to go in and out of there 24 hours a day or?
Answer the question.
Your question was the access. What would you like to say? Normally, we would have an office and have a staff at that office from a reasonable business hour, like seven to four. We would have access after that if somebody had to get in. But my experience with this type of product is there are very few people are going to show up there at 2:00 in the morning. Almost an emergency.
Is there keypad access after that eight to four or what you just verbally referenced, seven to four? It was eight to five in the document that we read?
No, eight to five was fine. Yeah, I'm very flexible on that. I mean, we haven't exactly decided on all this yet. And much of, including much of the design and aesthetics, I've indicated to the town and that I would be glad to work with them on something that would be agreeable to both the town and the neighbors. I don't really care what the wall looks like as long as it's functional and it looks good. It's the same cost to build it. And also the colors of the of the structure. I would hope the the town would have input and say, you know, we'd like gray or blue or something like that, you know. So it's kind of a work in progress and I'm very flexible as far as designing these things to appeal to, you know, practically everybody. Can't make everybody happy, but you can get close to it.
Would you have hours on the weekend? Because most of the demographic in our area commutes to work or that is their working time. So successful businesses typically?
Well, I would say, Mayor, that to start with, I would go to eight to five and we'll have it staff probably from seven to six. But I would like the, I would like to reserve the opportunity to change that as demands meet. You know, and particularly when we first start the facility, there's there's a little bit of an influx of people, you know, they're renting. And then after it's stabilized, so to speak, the the hours can be, you know, much more restrictive. But they're going to be reasonable hours.
What about Saturday?
That's what I was going to lead into. What about weekend, for example, on a Saturday?
Weekends will be the same, eight to five.
Okay, so it's not just Monday through Friday?
No, 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 it has to have access seven days a week. People store their things there. We are going to be very careful about restricting who is renting units. In other words, going to discourage and not allow contractors or people that would be there every day of the week getting materials and supplies out. We're not going to allow that. We're not going to allow any boats or RVs. There's only going to be four or five parking spaces to begin with and they will be exclusively for the use of individuals that are visiting the office. So it's it's going to really be a dry storage. And I will tell you that after probably six months, there'll be very little traffic there. That's been my experience.
Thank you. Councilmember Mendoza, did you have any questions?
No, just as long as it's not a 24-hour access type of thing. Said you don't need people in there at 2:00 in the morning.
Okay, so I, we just recently had a storage come before us and they had a pretty detailed idea of exactly what they were doing, what things were going to look like, what their business hours were going to be. They were very ahead of what I would call the schedule. So I'm a little concerned that the hours are kind of up in the air and that you're asking for us to be flexible, to maybe possibly let them change at your will. I would hope that nobody would be allowed in after a certain time even via keypad. I get that there's going to be staff there from whatever time till five or six at night, but what time does the keypad turn off? Does it turn off at 10? Does it turn off at midnight, 2:00 in the morning? I would prefer the keypad become deactivated after certain times so that people are not accessing it at 2:00 in the morning or, you know, 5:00 AM and being loud and disturbing the neighbors. I would also like to see the wall be higher than six foot. The previous storage was going to do a 10-foot wall. So I feel like they were kind of setting the standard and on what we should be expecting. If you want to make the wall look beautiful, great, that would be added to the community. And then I'm not understanding, I've never heard dead storage, so I'm not understanding. We've heard dead storage and dry storage. So I would like maybe a little bit more explanation because are they going to be able to store auto parts in their place? Like, how are you going to control, just like the last storage? How are you going to actually control what people are putting in their storage units and be able to guarantee us that they're not going to have things in there that we don't want them to be storing inside our community?
Well, to answer your your last concern, and that is a good concern. I don't have written contracts with my tenants and I'm very careful about vetting somebody, that an individual or a company that would come in there. If they are in, for example, a contracting business or a type of business that requires hazardous soils, paint, that sort of thing, I am not going to allow them in there. However, as you know, that's not going to prevent somebody from telling me they're not going to do these things and then they turn around and do them. And my answer to you is I'll just throw them out of there if they do that. I don't want them in the facility. As far as the access to the facility with with the keypad, I think the point you brought up is very reasonable. And so I think we should decide now. Do you want to make it nine o'clock? Do you want to make it six to nine, eight o'clock? What's reasonable and we'll do that. We'll stipulate that that's the way the the operation will be conducted. Now, as far as the wall goes, my experience with that is as follows, is that the city requires a six-foot wall. And a 10-foot wall might be okay, but a six-foot wall might look better. The aesthetics of the whole thing, as far as Florence Heights Drive, is going to somewhat depend on what the new Florence Heights Drive looks like. And I do have the elevations of that from Timely Horn. My engineer and I have spent quite a bit of time looking at how that might look from Florence Heights Drive. Six foot, nine foot, 10 foot. And that's something that I would like to work a little bit more on with the planning commission to get the height right. What I thought I would do, if I'm granted permission to build this thing, is to build about 10 feet of the wall next to one of the entrances. And I was going to do that as soon as ADOT granted me the entrance on from 79B, which they still have it, ADOT in Tucson. So if they grant that, what I was going to do is have a part of the wall constructed at that point. And we can try different things over there until we get it so the planning commission is happy with it in terms of both design and height. Would that be okay?
Sure, we can talk about that. I just need some clarification. You said you do not have a contract with the tenants who will be leasing the spaces? So how do you legally, how, I mean, I've rented many storage spaces and there's always a contract that I sign with them that tells me what can and cannot be stored there, when my start date is, what my features are?
I have a list of stipulated things that they can and can't do, but it's not a contract.
And so are they signing something with you?
No.
So we're working on a gentleman's handshake?
They're signing an agreement that they have read the following things that can't be conducted and that's what they're signing.
Okay.
But I don't want a contract with people because if I want to get rid of them, then I'm going to throw them out.
Okay.
And not not bother with them. I've had so many cases where somebody will come in and say, you know, I just tore roads or something, outs and equipment and they have hazardous, you know, hazard hazmat stuff in there. I want to get rid of them tomorrow morning, councilman. I don't want them. I don't want them to have a contract.
Yeah.
I don't.
Okay.
I've done this before and I and I operate these things, you know, pretty strictly.
All right, so. Perfect, thank you. Before you sit down, I just have one clarification. How many parking spots did you say you'll have again?
Five, I think it was. It was five. It was just enough to satisfy the 500-square-foot office I have in terms of people visiting, you say, and that's it.
Because I was just, I was going through and in reading the documentation and then in listening to the presentation, there are some items that are not matching up. So for example, specifically, it states earlier, you stated you'll have four parking spaces. And then I read for the office, the parking requirement for office and commercial uses per MCZO 1102.1.4 is one space for every 250 square feet of floor area. The office is 1,000 square feet in size, therefore, four parking spaces are required. Of this, two are for handicapped accessible parking, eight spaces are for customers and guests using the office, and the remaining two spaces are for employees. Also in listening, when I had questions regarding the operational hours, I was asking how people who are renting from you would be able to access their belongings. And the impression that I gleaned from our conversation was, you know, seven to four, eight to five, seven to six. But then when other council members asked questions, we were leaving the keypad open to, you know, whatever we wanted, whether it was eight, nine, 10 o'clock at night. How are we ensuring that people are leaving the premises at that time rather than taking up residence at that time? So it just, it leaves me with a lot of questions, especially when things are not solidified and finite, to be very honest. I also wanted to ask the question of Mari because typically, when we have businesses that are properly zoned for the zoning locations, they don't necessarily go before our council. This is not something we vote on. However, this is a conditional use permit. Mari, can you please educate the public on what a conditional use permit is and why it's required for mayor and council to give consent for those items to go forward? A conditional use permit, you are looking at a use that is not usually outright permitted. However, if designed and styled properly in order to be compatible with the surrounding uses or with the traffic or intersections that are in there, it can be allowed via the council approval. Now, these are resolutions in order to pass conditional use permits. And resolutions require public hearings, citizen input, as well as approval from town council, according to our code. So that is why conditional use permits come forward. Some of these uses are something that may not be within that area or maybe something that would be outright permitted in a different zoning. And a conditional use permit allows for us to go through a public hearing process in order to make sure what is going there will be, I don't want to use it, compatible with what is there and just kind of integrate better. It gives a chance for people to review how this will work and integrate into that area. So that is what a conditional use permit is more or less giving a summary. You did beautiful. Everything was spot on. I just wanted it to be communicated to our public. So to clarify with the parking question that you had, though, that was one error within the designer view or the conditional use packet that was submitted to staff. The code that was in there is actually for the county. So the code that we use for the town of Florence, the, if I remember correctly, the, a general office is one space per 200 square feet. So with this, there would be maybe a minimum of four parking spaces required or, you know, more if they wanted to. And at least one of those spaces has to be ADA. And that is why you see that parking discrepancy between what you were given and what is being reported on. Thank you. Again, I appreciate that clarification. Council, before I open up for public comment, questions, input, does anybody have any further questions or comments they'd like to make at this time? At this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If there's anybody in the public that would like to speak on this agenda item, please come forward now. If you are online, I'll wait a moment. Please raise your hand. Ms. Courtney Ramirez. Mayor, can you just say for the record that you've opened the public hearing? Yes, I have officially opened the public hearing. I believe I had two hands that went up. First, Ms. Courtney Ramirez, and then the icon known as J.
Hi, guys. Sorry, can you guys hear me?
Can you hear us, Courtney?
Yep, I hear you guys.
Can you see us?
Nope. The screen's blacked out, but I hear you.
Okay, I'll give you a heads up. Go ahead.
Okay, but but you guys can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. So I'm just speaking out again regarding the storage. I really would like the council to consider, to highly consider not allowing something like that at our intersection of our beautiful Main Street. I think that some, something more beneficial for the community can go there. And, you know, with the profession that I'm in, it's, you know, I heard the gentlemen say that they won't allow construction people to store their items. However, I get asked a lot about storage for construction items and I find it hard to believe that, you know, with they, them not having contracts, you know, how, how are they going to really monitor what is going in and in and out of there? And I think I had seen once that the traffic study was done back in 2019. that the traffic study was done back in 2019. I think our our traffic that uses that road has has changed since then also. But again, it's gonna put money in the investor's pocket, but it's not really gonna provide jobs, you know. Two jobs will be provided with that, with that whole thing. I think that that's something more beneficial for the community should go there. So thank you for listening.
You're welcome, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time that's attending either in person or virtually? Counsel? Councilmember Rodriguez, do you have anything? Councilmember Rodriguez? All right.
Just a quick clarification, can count, oh, there she goes.
Oh, she just muted back.
I have nothing.
Okay. All right, we're closing the public hearing. If no further questions or comments are had, this is up for a motion as well.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that would send this back to planning and zoning and have them give us more definition about the hours and the other questions that have been raised here tonight.
Second then. There is a motion and a second to rescind this back to PNZ at this time. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B is a second public hearing and discussion approval disapproval of ordinance number 714-22, an ordinance of the town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property tax within the town of Florence, subject to taxation of a certain sum upon each $100 evaluation, sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for general municipal expenses for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2023. First reading was on June 30th, 2022. Ms. Becky Jimenez.
It's Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council. Every year, the town levies a primary property tax. Last year, our rate was $1.06 per $100 in net assessed valuation. And we're proposing a rate of 1.0743 per $100 of net assessed valuation. On a 100, on a $100,000 home, pardon me, on a $300,000 home, it would be less than $10. On a $500,000 home, it would be less than $15 increase. So we have prepared for you a comparative and some different options if council chooses to revisit this. And I'll go ahead and just let it go to, back to you for public hearing.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jimenez. At this, can somebody please be kind and shut that door for me? Thank you so much.
I do want to add something, Mayor.
Yes, proceed.
The property tax is one of our revenues that we have control over. That and our state shared revenues, which are handed down from the state itself. All of our other revenues in the general fund are subject to the economy, to building starts. So and if any of those fluctuate, we can always depend on our property tax levy to at least be one source of income that we can count on. So I just want to make you aware of that as we go forward.
Thank you. One other point I wanted to bring up, and I wish that I brought this up at the last council meeting, when people are asking about our tax revenue. Again, this is something that is revisited every single year. Our council looks at what is coming in, what is going out. There are decreases, there are increases. As it's been communicated, there is money that we have that we can access, we can spend. However, due to the expenditure limitation rule, let's say Prop 459 does not pass, unfortunately, yes, we have money in the bank, but we can't touch it. I'm sure that if you've looked at our budget, we've had to budget down and pare a lot out. The caveat to that is if we can go back to where we have our expenditure limitation, now we can access that money, we can spend that money. Unfortunately, if Prop 459 does not pass, now we have to have other avenues to secure money to be able to continue providing services to our citizens. That comes in the forms of bonds and financing. And with that comes additional costs that would be passed on because we have to pay for that additional financing, that additional bonds. Obviously, we're hoping that we can, and I'm not, I'm saying this to educate and inform. If Prop 459 passes, we have that access, we have that money. When we revisit this next year, we can take a revisit at that as we do every year. But we have to plan for all case scenarios. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments about this? Opening up to public hearing as well, counsel can still speak.
Becky, do you know what? The county just voted on their property tax. Do you know what that ended up being?
No, I don't.
Okay. I just, I talked to council, or to Supervisor Goodman, and he told me that they lowered it. And I was just hoping that maybe you knew because he did not have the number for me. Thank you, Jeff.
All right, are there any other questions, comments? I have one hand up, Courtney Ramirez.
We can so I spoke out in opposition of this increase for the people again. And tonight, I just feel as strong as I did last time. I don't think that the people should be taxed anymore right now because of the hardships that everybody is having, you know, and this is Florence, you know, there's not a, a lot of wealthy people here. And I think the thought of just, you know, taxing and taxing is just not a good time to do that right now. I, you know, we understand, you know, everybody is having a hard time. But it just seems like there's where there's a will, there's a way to take that from somewhere else. And Michelle, you're now 22. Hope County. So, you know, it seems like we're we're one of the ones in the middle that just wants to keep taxing the people. And I just don't think it's an appropriate time to keep taking from people that are already struggling a lot right now. I mean, $10 doesn't sound like a lot, but I think it's, you know, a lot of it is the principle also, you know. You hear of other municipalities talking about how they have such a surplus and question why they keep taxing their people if there's such a surplus. And then a lot of those municipalities say, you know, this isn't right. We shouldn't keep taxing the people. You know, and they talk about dropping the taxes. So just consider that. The economy's not doing, you know, inflation is really crazy right now. Gas is high, you know, everything is high. So just consider that before you guys continue to keep raising, you know, putting it on the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak this evening? Mr. Rosa?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Town Council. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Kathy DeRosa. I reside at 7737 West Noble Prairie Drive. Certainly, no one wants to see property taxes or any other of our taxes have to be increased. The bold action that this council may take tonight is something that we all understand has to happen, especially in light of Proposition 459. All we can do is hope that the voters understand the complexity of it and are willing to trust in the town council, whether it be this council or a new council, to make the right decisions as we move forward. So I encourage you, as much as I hate to, to do what you need to do to make sure the town of Florence takes care of its citizens as well as the city staff who protect us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? Closing the public hearing. And with that, we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 714-22, an ordinance of the town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the town of Florence, subject to taxation of a certain sum upon each $100 evaluation, sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for general municipal expenses for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council.
Item number C, we have a proclamation declaring the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month in the town of Florence, encouraging residents to get outdoors and enjoy their community through parks and recreation. Ms. Allison Fleas.
Mayor, I actually have my rec division here. So I would like to call them up to read the proclamation with you. We have, we're a little biased here. The best parks and recreation. Okay. AKA, community services team in the state, if not the country. Let's give them a round of applause for all that they do. All right, this is a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month. I swear, this department has to have the most fun. Whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks and
Whereas Parks and Recreation promote time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention, deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's and
Whereas Parks and Recreation encourage physical activities by providing space and popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and other activities designed to promote active lifestyles and okay, whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of business and crime reduction and whereas Parks and Recreation are fundamental for the environmental well-being of our community and
Whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change and
Whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the illogical beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreation outdoors and whereas U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month and Now therefore, I, Tara Walter, Mayor of the town of Florence, Arizona, do hereby proclaim Parks and Recreation Month in the town of Florence and encourage our residents to go outdoor and enjoy our parks and recreation services that are provided in the town of Florence. Do you want to tell us some of the great things that are going on?
Mayor, council, public, we've put out a calendar on social media Friday. So there's something every day that's going on, whether it's along with our library, our Parks and Rec, also visiting our parks. Full sale open till July. Labor Day, while the kids go back to school. So we'll be down to weekends. We got our rec club going on. Also, at the end of the month, first time glow, teen glow bingo on Friday. So if you guys know any teens, something we're, something you were trying, trying out here. So we've got things going on all month. Did I cover it? All right.
I do think the adults should try out the glow bingo just to make sure it goes really well for the teens. Just kidding. All right, so this is for you and your department. Ms. Ally, come on up here. Allison Fleas is the director of the department and she puts in countless hours working alongside everybody here. Do you want to say a few words? I just want to say how proud I am of this crew right here. We've developed some new programs in just a short few months. We recently had our first ever Florence Fairies program, which was a little ballet group. They performed last Saturday at our junior NBA program. And then we also had a Missoula Children's Theater Program this past Friday and Saturday. And that was developed from one of our interns and rec leaders. So I'm just very proud of all the work that they do day in and day out. And I think that they provide so many great services to the community. Very grateful to them.
Ally? Ally, would you introduce your team? I know this is just three of them. A very large team, but would you just introduce the people that are here tonight?
Yes, so we have Bevo and he oversees our rec club as well as teen programming. What else? Oh, and special interest. He recently had to transition and roll, so I'm still, still kind of getting used to that. I'm so used to everything that they used to do. Megan oversees our community center, the fitness center, and youth and adult sports as well as, am I missing, I know I'm missing something. Is that it? Okay. And Alicia oversees special events and aquatics. So they wear many hats, but they do it well.
Thank you.
Ms. Jimenez, just double
Ms. Jimenez, just doubling back up to item B. I neglected to read that amount into the record. Can you please do so at this time?
Yes, the levy is $1,386,500.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. Item number seven, adjourned to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One. At this time, we need a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Item A is discussion approval disapproval of ordinance number MRCFD-1119-22, an ordinance of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, Pinal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of property within the community facilities district subject to taxation of certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for community facilities expenses for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023. First reading was on June 20th, 2022. Ms. Becky Jimenez.
Yes. District Board, uh, our levy this year for general obligation bonds and CFD Number One is .8153 per $100 net assessed valuation for an estimated total of $330,902. This is to pay for debt service. The rate for operations and maintenance is 30 cents per $100 of net assessed valuation for an estimated $121,767. The total levy is $452,669 at a total rate of $1.1153 per $100 of net assessed valuation. The administrative fund pays for various items such as costs related to audits or engineers, some streets maintenance, and just various legal costs and things like that that the district may incur.
Thank you. At this time, Board, do you have any questions or comments? Opening up to public hearing, either in person or online, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, closing the public hearing, request for a motion.
I make a motion. We adopt ordinance number MRCFD-1119-22 for a total levy amount of $452,669.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B, discussion approval disapproval of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, May 16th and June 20th, 2022, meeting minutes. Are there any questions, comments, concerns regarding this agenda item? Seeing none, moved. We need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Need a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item A is discussion approval disapproval of ordinance Number MRCFD-2219-22, an ordinance of the Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two, Pinal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the community facilities district subject to taxation of certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for community facilities expenses for fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2023. First reading was on June 20th, 2022. Ms. Becky Jimenez.
Yes, uh, this first rate is for the debt service for the general obligations bonds in CFD Number Two. The rate is $3.25 per $100 of net assessed valuation or an estimated amount of $981,968. The rate for operation and maintenance for the administrative fund is 30 cents per $100 of net assessed valuation or an estimated $90,643. The total levy is for $1,072,611 at a rate, total rate of $3.55 for $100 of net assessed valuation.
Thank you. Board, are there any questions or comments?
Yeah.
Board Member Anderson?
No.
Opening for public comment at this time? The hearing is open. Seeing no such movement? Closed for the public hearing? And we need a motion.
I make a motion. We adopt ordinance Number MRCFD-219-22.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B is discussion approval disapproval of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, June 20th, 2022, meeting minutes. Are there any questions or comments regarding this item? Seeing none, we need a motion?
So moved.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Need a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 11 is consent. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Approval of the April 4th, April 18th, May 4th, and May 11th, 2022, Town Council Meeting Minutes. Item B is to receive and file the following board and commission minutes, planning and zoning for June 2nd, 2022. Seeing no such movement, we need a motion?
I make a motion. We approve the items presented.
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All... Motion carries. Item 12 is our unfinished business, discussion approval disapproval of ordinance Number 715-22. This is an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the streetlight improvement districts, numbers one, two, three, four, and five, subject to taxation of certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for streetlight operations for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2023. Ms. Rebecca Jimenez.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is for our streetlight improvement districts. Our first district slid number one at Anthem at Merrill Ranch is levied at .13 per $100 of net assessed valuation for a sum of $25,000. Slid number two has no levy. It still has adequate funds to cover the electrical costs this year. Slid number three is at .1328 for a levy of $35,000. Slid number four is at .8369 for a levy of $32,000. Slid number five is at $1.20 because its net assessed valuation is still very low for an amount of $389. The same with slid number six, $1.20. Uh, that will generate $126, and then slid number four, same, $1.20, and that will yield $1,154. So those are our levies for this year.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on this agenda item? Seeing no such movement, we need a motion.
I make a motion. We approve ordinance 715-22.
Second. Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Item 13 is our legislative update. Mr. Jeff Grace?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. With the second regular session of the 55th Legislature now adjourned, uh, I would like to provide a few high-level updates on how a few, a couple of our legislative priorities trended over the session. Uh, I'll touch on the state budget and some of the local impacts therein, and then I'd just like to wrap up and follow up on a few of the pieces of legislation that we were tracking, let you know where those landed this session. Uh, so first up, in terms of our legislative priorities, um, the first goal where we saw some progress was in reestablishing a funding source for the Heritage Fund via Senator Schirps' SB 1270 bill. Uh, because that bill was budget-related, it was eventually folded into the budget process and the budget negotiations, uh, but it did survive that process, and for FY '23, um, uh, the general fund, uh, state general fund budget will be allocating $2.5 million to the Heritage Fund. Uh, I need to verify if that's going to be an ongoing source of funding or if it's going to be lottery funding going forward. The intent of Senator Schirps' bill was to, uh, reestablish the recurring lottery funding source that was present previously. Uh, in the budget, I only see a total for this fiscal year that, that just started on July 1, and so I need to verify if that's going to be a recurring funding source going forward. But, but good progress there, uh, in terms of getting the Heritage Fund funded once again. Uh, I know it was kind of, the state was utilizing some one-time funding, uh, for a little while there. Uh, and then in terms of enhancing some of the tools and resources associated with state tourism, I did want to let you know that they, it looks like the, um, the, the governor and the legislature is establishing a new pilot program, uh, and a new major events fund within the Commerce Authority for special event promotion and attraction. Uh, so they are doing a little bit of work in terms of overall state tourism and providing some resources and programmings, at least in this pilot form, uh, for some of those activities going forward. Uh, so just wanted to touch on some of those legislative priorities. Um, in terms of the state budget, uh, after months of stalemate and inaction, lawmakers on both sides of the aisle came to an agreement on a bipartisan budget, uh, for the state on June 22nd. Uh, that budget passed and was signed, um, by the governor a week later on June 28th. Uh, the new state budget for Arizona is almost $16 billion and became effective on, uh, July 1st, the beginning of the fiscal year. Um, and, uh, the largest components of the budget include, uh, $1 billion for water, uh, and water resources over the next three years. Uh, the main three goals of the governor's, uh, water program and this new, uh, billion-dollar allocation is to find new sources of water in Arizona, is to conserve and bolster existing sources, and then, uh, they also have plans to expand and retool the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona, uh, so that they can review and finance projects, not just for municipalities as they do currently, but for the state to enhance the state's water supply. So it sounds like they're going to be, uh, expanding, uh, what they're doing and looking to fund, uh, maybe more statewide projects, um, utilizing that, uh, board and financing authority. Uh, so just a couple of updates there. In terms of the next largest component, uh, in the state budget, they included $1 billion for state transportation and infrastructure. Uh, we had a few projects, uh, included, um, in terms of, uh, projects relevant to Florence. Uh, so they included $100,000, um, to assess the intersection. Um, so I think basically perform a study, um, of the intersection at State Route 79 and Hunt Highway. Uh, so that was included in the final budget. Uh, that was something that I worked, uh, on, um, with the RTAC and Kevin Adams in getting that project in there. Originally, we had requested to fund the construction, but it looks like they ultimately just approved the, the study or the assessment, um, for that highway, uh, area. And then second, um, uh, $15 million was also included to conduct the Tier Two studies for the north-south corridor. Uh, originally, uh, in working with ADA and others on this, uh, they had originally forecasted, uh, a need of $19 million. Um, so I don't know if that forecast was revised or they just chose to fund basically 80% of the Tier Two study costs. So I'm going to, uh, follow up on that now that the dust is clearing from the previous legislative session. But still, $15 million for our Tier Two study is, is a great, uh, progress, and, uh, they were able to leverage some of the other projects, uh, throughout the state that were also ready for Tier Two, and they combined them in a, in a bill, and, and that made some progress and gained some traction in the legislature. Uh, and so finally, uh, in terms of, uh, pending legislation and updating you, since the last time we spoke, uh, the following bills were passed and sent to the governor on June 24th. Uh, in looking at, uh, the tracking system today, I do not believe they've been signed as of yet, but we do expect them to be signed. And so the first bill, uh, that did make it through kind of at the wire was Senate Bill 1268. That's number six on your list. Uh, that's for PSPRS, and, uh, it's been referred to as the Drop Expansion Bill. Uh, that bill extends, uh, the Public Safety Drop Program from 60 months to 84 months for Tier One Public Safety Employees, as long as they're of 51 years of age and have 24 and a half years of service. If, uh, if, uh, excuse me, if a Tier One employee is already in drop, uh, they can extend drop for 24 months, uh, if both the employer and employee agree to that extension. And so, uh, the, originally, the league was opposed to that bill, but in, uh, working with stakeholders on the bill, they, uh, arrived at a neutral position, uh, once they were confident that the PSPRS system was not going to be adversely affected by this, uh, expansion in, in drop, which is the Deferred Retirement Option Plan for Public Safety Employees. Uh, the second bill that made it through at the wire was, uh, House Bill 2721 for law enforcement officers and, uh, related to AZ post. Uh, the bill states that any government committee, board, agency, department, office, or entity that, uh, is in charge of investigating a law enforcement officer misconduct, uh, that, uh, those boards, uh, in terms of that, uh, the voting members must be two-thirds AZ post-certified. And so the league was, uh, opposed to this bill. They were worried that would, that may create, um, representation issues in terms of, uh, maybe having, I guess, non-AZ post individuals represented on those boards. Um, but, uh, that was, um, that measure was successful in going through. Um, looking at, uh, a similar measure that was adopted previously, uh, was, I believe, blocked by a judge. Uh, it was ruled to be unconstitutional, so we'll see if this measure is able to stand and move forward. Uh, but I believe, uh, a similar measure, what, um, as this was included in a previous budget, uh, but it was deemed unconstitutional, but that could have been because other items were lumped in, uh, with that budget bill. Um, and so, uh, we'll keep our eyes on this one going forward. And then finally, uh, the last bill that was, um, successful in getting through on your list, and, uh, oh, apologies, the previous bill was number seven on your list. Uh, that was the drop, uh, excuse me, the AZ post bill. And then finally, number 11 on your list, uh, Senate Bill 1168, uh, did make it through and was sent to the governor on June 24th as well. Uh, this one's, this, uh, bill concerns short-term rentals and enforcement, uh, by local municipalities. Um, and the amended version of this bill, uh, allows for governments to establish a regulatory license or permit to operate short-term rentals and outlines the application requirements for both an applicant and the municipality. Uh, so adding additional, I guess, regulation to the short-term, uh, rental, uh, market. Uh, additionally, the measure allows a city or town to require that a short-term rental operator, um, provide adjacent neighbors with their contact information and encourage residents to communicate directly with the operator for non-emergency issues. And so, um, while proliferation, uh, basically the, the number and, uh, how many short-term rentals are allowed in a community, while that wasn't, uh, broached, um, in this legislation, um, it, the league does view this, uh, legislation favorably and, uh, sees it as, you know, making meaningful, meaningful progress and peeling back some of the, the preemption that occurred in terms of short-term rentals and some of the, um, I guess, rights and, uh, abilities, uh, cities and towns may have to regulate and, and monitor that, those types of operations, um, that was present in the 2016 bill. Uh, and so there, uh, the league was very active in working with, uh, short-term rental industry and various stakeholders and, uh, believes they arrived at a, at a pretty good compromise in terms of this bill and providing, as I mentioned, for, uh, that additional, uh... and, uh, believes they arrived at a, at a pretty good compromise in terms of this bill and providing, as I mentioned, for, uh, that additional, uh, regulation um, and, and licensing, uh, in regards to short-term rentals. And so, uh, those were the main highlights I wanted to pass along, uh, in terms of the budget and the legislative session and some of the pending legislation we were tracking. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, are there any questions or comments regarding the information provided by Mr. Graves at this time? Thank you for the comprehensive update, we appreciate you keeping us informed regarding the issues. Item fourteen is our manager's report.
Mayor Vice Mayor and Council, you have a written manager's report included in the packet. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Department reports, counsel, are there any questions for any of the department heads at this time?
Yes, I have a question for the police department. I noticed that you are in the process of buying another motorcycle. And we just got rid of our motorcycle, didn't we? I wondered why we were getting another one.
We had not, uh, Mayor Vice Mayor, council members, we had an opportunity through a grant, opportunity through GOHS, um, to go ahead and get another motorcycle. Um, if there was a motorcycle prior to my arrival, I'm not aware of it. Um, I see this as an opportunity, um, for our police officers to, um, have a level of advancement. Um, one of the things that I constantly got when I first came is our police officers. I didn't believe that there was a whole lot of opportunity for doing other things within the police department. So when talking about this opportunity, it was something that they wanted to go ahead and do. Um, again, the motorcycle was obtained through a grant, so I thought it was a good idea. I'm going to go ahead and do, just give us an opportunity to work part-time on traffic services.
Well, I don't question the, the need, I just thought it was sort of strange that we got rid of the other one. I don't, I don't recall why we did that. About a year ago. Thank you.
All right, Chief, I also have one question for you. And this, this is going to piggyback because at the Fourth of July event yesterday, I had a delightful conversation with a young man who recently graduated college with a degree in criminal justice and his father. They come from, um, backgrounds with police. His father is a police officer. How many openings do we currently have for police officers in our Town of Florence at the moment?
We currently have six openings. Um, but we're looking hopefully to go ahead and fill four of those six here within the probably the next thirty days. And the town manager has been very, uh, graceful in allowing me an opportunity to think outside the box and uh, make sure that we at least, uh, offer some, um, opportunities for these four to go ahead and come on board and stay committed to us.
And the reason why I bring it up in the conversation, I said, you know, if my son or daughter were interested in police work, I absolutely love the Town of Florence because not only are we the safest community, but if you observe our police as they are, you know, monitoring and circulating, like, that's a benefit that they pointed out to me is I'd want my child to work in the Town of Florence for police because they have an opportunity to be proactive and preventative and keep the community safe versus working in a larger city such as Mesa, Tempe, Phoenix, where the levels of danger are increased.
Yes, ma'am, Mayor, uh, Vice Mayor, Councilors, thank you so much, uh, for that conversation that you had and I will go ahead and let you know when we start talking to the particular, uh, potential applicants that we have, that's one of the first thing to talk about. Is they go to our webpage and they kind of see the things that we're doing out there in reference to community-oriented policing. They see the type of relationships that we have out there with our citizens. They love the opportunity, not only to do policing, but to be able to go out and just have conversations with our citizen, be a part of the, uh, community. So, again, uh, in reference to what we're getting and what we're seeing in reference to filling those positions, uh, that's what we're getting. And I'm, I'm probably would go ahead and say ecstatic about the potential of what our police department is going to go ahead and be with these new applicants.
Well, when they join our force, I would love to have them at a council meeting and give them a welcome.
Yes, ma'am.
And if anybody's interested, we do have other positions opened in other departments in the Town of Florence. So I encourage you to visit our webpage and check them out. And if you have any questions, you can reach out to Ms. Catherine Wilson, um, who is our HR Director. All right, at this time, we have our second call to the public. Is there anybody either in person or online that would like to speak at this time? I do see Ms. Ramirez, if you would like to go ahead and unmute her. Go ahead, Ms. Ramirez.
Good evening again. Um, I wanted to bring up a situation that, um, apparently happened over the weekend on Saturday night. Um, again, there was a lot of talk going around the community, so I don't know what's true and what's not. But apparently there were, um, kids at the park and I understand that there were people, um, possibly eighteen and over, and in this particular situation, uh, one of the girls was assaulted. So, um, of course, you know, i- if that's true, i- is the police department going to be doing anything, um, extra to patrol our parks uh, more often at night, um, all the parks on foot, you know, and those crevices may be where the lights don't shine, um, to protect kids that that are out and about after dark. Um, I'd, I'd like to see that happen personally. I know a lot of the, the parents would if indeed something like that really did happen over the weekend. Um, I know there's a curfew, but, you know, not everybody abides by that. But if we can do, take an extra step to keep our parks a little bit safer, that would be, uh, amazing.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll direct Chief to reach out. That is not our area. Anyhow, I'd also like to just, you know, in regards to that, um, curfew that Ms. Ramirez mentioned, you know, I know that our police do make their rounds and they do check it out and they do redirect youth to not be out in the parks past dusk, as I've had prior conversations. So, thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? Closing our second call to the public and call to the council. Councilmember Mendoza.
All I have to say is Parks and Rec, you guys did an outstanding job on the Fourth of July. Um, festivities, everything went well, every, you know, I, I knew there were some complaints, um, and those were handled, um, professionally. Uh, you guys did a really good job. Just want to commend you guys for a, a wonderful evening. My kids loved the fireworks and thanks to you guys doing your job, thank you.
Councilmember Hughes.
I have nothing, thanks.
Councilmember Neil.
I went to the, uh, the play, I can't remember who put it on. My baby girl was in it, it was a very good play. Man, if you didn't catch it, you missed out. That was awesome. Uh, one thing I wanted to say that goes back to earlier in the meeting, when I got on council, first thing I said is, I'm never going to vote to raise taxes. And then I got on council and then I realized that somebody's got to be the person to raise taxes for stuff to keep going in this town. I have ten kids and I got to pay that tax too. It sucks, but it has to be done. I feel it was totally necessary. And sorry for whoever that tax is going to hurt so horribly, but we all got to pay the same tax. It's something that has to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson. Vice, Councilmember Rodriguez.
I am so glad that, uh, Snake sort of preluded to it, I was actually going to say a sentiment similar to what he said is that it, raising taxes is something that we never enjoy doing, but, um, as somebody who owns multiple properties within Florence, I, uh, you know, I understand the burden it is on the taxpayer and, um, understand that that's something that we, you know, we have to pay it too and we do not enjoy it. Um, but ultimately, um, it is something that has to be done at times. Uh, and we review that every year, we are always trying to think about our public first and making sure we're able to provide services um, in a continual manner, um, and improving every year. So, um, that's all I really had, besides I went to the, um, Freedom Fest, I'm sure all of council did or a lot of council did. And it was, um, beautifully organized, I do appreciate the hard work that went in. Tell the fireworks, the firework display was amazing. So, um, kudos to him for putting that all together, so, um, otherwise, that's all I had.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Um, so I will just kind of go along with, uh, Snake and with Kristen. It's a necessity, a necessary evil and I am one that I don't want to pay more money than I need to. But unfortunately, if we want our town to grow and we want our town to continue to be prosperous and be able to have events and do things like that, um, we're one of the few cities that I've ever been to where they offer a lot of things, especially at like the festival that we just had, where the kids get to enjoy themselves and parents aren't constantly bringing out of their pocket. And so when we sit here and talk about having to raise taxes and having to do things that are going to go into our pockets now, it's so that we can continue to make our, um, community a community that people want to live in and they want to play here and they love it and we go places and all we do is talk about our community. And when we go places and we hear people talking about our community, it's awesome. And I will tell you that the events we have are getting back to other countries. And so when these people come to the United States to visit, they go into the fudge shop and they tell Cory, oh, we're from, uh, Finland or, I'm trying to think of all the places that have come and it's great to hear it because they, they were told about our town and they came, they saw and they went out and they're spreading the word about what a great town we are. So I don't like taxes, um, at all, but we have to do it. And, um, the festival or the event this weekend was fantastic. Everyone around me kept saying, oh, thank you, thank you. And I'm like, I ain't got nothing to do with this, I will not take credit, this is our Parks and Rec. This is our citizens of the Town of Florence that, um, expect a high standard of events. And because of that, our staff has stepped up and done a wonderful job. So I think all of us should be proud of what we did this weekend and what we continue to do and as we continue to grow because it's been fantastic to watch us grow the last four years, thank you.
So I will keep it brief tonight, I only have three points. The first was I want to thank everybody who took the time to come out to the many events for Prop four fifty-nine that occurred at all areas of our community. If somebody wasn't unable, if somebody was unable to attend, I appreciated that they reached out and that our staff took the time to provide that education and respond to any questions that were had. Um, again, I think that's key because with Prop four fifty-nine, again, we want to use tax dollars responsibly. And if we have to, you know, pay to finance things, pay to bond things, I don't feel that's effective, but we also have to balance it with continuing service delivery for our community and our citizens. So it's a very fine balance. So I appreciate everybody's understanding and patience and us working together as a community to continue moving forward and growing in a smart and responsible manner. The Fourth of July event, that was so amazing, it was well put together. So I want to say thank you because it was actually a very special day to me, it was my twentieth wedding anniversary. So it was nice to see the fireworks and have an opportunity to just be out and about, enjoy some music, some delicious, delicious churros and smoothies. So, thank you, all of the kids, everybody had a really nice time. Wanted to give a reminder that school is back in session for Florence Unified School District. The kids do go back to school on July twentieth. So please make sure to drive carefully, keep an eye out for those kiddos, especially as our kindergartners are making their way walking possibly for the first time. Take a little extra precaution during those crosswalks and let's make sure everybody gets to school safely. That is all I have for this evening. Um, with that, we do have an executive session that we will be going to for the purpose of discussions or consultations with designated representatives of the public body and our legal counsel, um, regarding providing instructions to the interim town manager on priorities and assignments. With that, we need a motion. Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and motion carries.